Okay, well, welcome, everybody. Welcome to the seven o'clock meeting, the Palmdale City Council. We will do a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence in honor of our troops. See, who could I cap for that? Chief, could you do the pledge for us tonight? Thank you. Thank you, that was Chief Sullivan, he's our fire chief out here. Thank you, sir. Uh, okay, city clerk, can we get a roll call, please? Here?
Here.
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 Okay. Let me distract everybody for ya. Alright. Alright, so, y'all know that, uh... Everybody, we're at a hundred percent on adoptions, uh, from our local shelter here. And, um, uh, it's probably over a hundred percent because people go in looking for our featured dog, and they end up with, uh, it's gone, so they come and find another one. So, uh, we've been doing pretty good, and Jesse's gonna tell us a little about this, uh, about, about our homeless puppy we have here today. Jesse? This is extra loud, Timmy.
Uh, yeah, I hear it, thank you. Good evening, everyone, happy new year. I have tonight, uh, Leona. Leona came to us as a stray, so she became homeless on the third of January. And she's been with us ever since. She's already fixed, she's already chipped, and got all those shots. She is, for the first time meeting her, one wonderful dog. I can say that honestly, because I had her out in the yard, I was playing with her, and she ran alongside me, right on my heel. When I stopped, she stopped and sat down on my heel. So, I mean, somebody was working with her. I'd tell her to stay, and she would stay, I'd move away, she stayed until I called her. Really, really good dog. She's, uh, kinda skittish at first. Very, very low-key, but she warms up really quick. She'd be a great, great lapdog, 'cause she acts like a lapdog. And a real good cuddler to watch, uh, movies on a cold night. Uh, you look at her, the way she just standing here, you know, she's got a great demeanor.
So, what, uh, so Leona?
Leona.
Right over at the Palmdale Center, so, uh...
Yeah, she's available now.
Available right now, so I know my wife is watching, every time she sees that. Oh, no, here comes another buster, so, alright, well, and then, Carrie? But wait, there's more, what happens?
For anyone that adopts, our city council, Q Critter, or one of our featured pets on our Palmdale Public Safety, uh, Four-legged Fridays days on our, uh, Palmdale Public Safety Facebook page. Um, those that adopt those featured animals are, uh, welcome to come to the Neighborhood Services Department and pick up a goodie bag, uh, for, for the dog. And there's plenty to choose from. If she's not the breed for you, the breed for you is at the Animal Care Center. Guaranteed rabbits, cats, I saw a red-eared slider when I was in there last week. So, if you are looking for anything with four legs, maybe fur, maybe not fur, they have it at the Animal Care Center, so please consider adopting rather than shopping. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. Thanks. Okay, so, anybody wanna see him? There you go. Alright? Okay, thanks, Jesse, thank you very much for being here, so. And thank, thank all your volunteers over there, too. Sent a couple of folks over there, were looking for volunteer opportunities, they said, "Go see Jesse."
Oh, yeah.
Okay? Thanks a lot. And... I, so... How about those, uh, Highland Bulldogs, huh? Come on down here. So you guys were thirteen and one last year, right?
Last year, yeah.
Yep, and you beat North Torrance in the, uh, uh, twenty-four to twelve, right?
It was this year, yeah.
This year? And, uh, then what?
Well, we, we beat, we beat North Torrance for the Division Nine CIF Seventh Section Championship, and, uh, once you... That's the first one in school history, and, uh, big accomplishment. And so, when you win a championship, uh, you get to go up for a state championship. And so, they parus against, uh, another Southern California team, which was actually northern of us, uh, Selma, up by Bakersfield, and, uh, we, we played that game at ABC. Battled back from that game and got a victory there, so we're the Southern Regional State Champions. And then, uh, we were invited for the big one, the big dance, and that's when, you know, you came out and we had that amazing send-off that the city put on, which, uh, you know, I, I peeked back at the bus when we were going through all that, I've never seen these young men smile so nice and just, uh...
Is that pretty cool, huh, getting run through all that traffic? So we had, we had our sheriff's department and our fire department, uh, gave these guys a, uh, a send-off, uh, police and fire escort to the freeway. So, and our public works guys closed off the lane, uh, for a short time on, uh, Rancho Vista Boulevard to get them through, and it was, uh, it was pretty cool. I, I ran around on a siren for thirty-two years, but that was the most fun run I ever did, so...
And it was the quickest run I've ever had by the mall, too.
There's that, too.
Around Christmas, it was, it was great.
So tell us, tell us about the game.
So we went up to, uh, Ripon High School, uh, they have the home game, excuse me. A small town, a well-coached team, uh, played it, played, you know, uh, sluggish first quarter, got ourselves a little bit of a hole, uh, but like, these young men have proven all year long, they don't give up, and very resilient, um, dug deep, um, came back, tied it up, made it a game. At that point, you know, it's just, every mistake is magnified, and, um, you know, they, they drove down, they had a, a long field goal that I felt good about, when I saw the kicker come out wearing a number fifty-five jersey, I'm thinking, "They got no linemen out here trying to kick the ball." Uh, it started to rain, feeling a little good about it.
We, so, there were a bunch of us that piled in over there at, uh, at, uh, Transplants, and, uh, they sold a lot of beer that night. 'Cause we were yelling, we were hoarse by the time we got done. And I don't know if, uh, if any of that energy transferred over to you guys, but we had a full house over there at, uh, at Transplants, and those guys, uh, had the game piped in over there. And then we said, "Man, it's, it's raining like crazy," so, yeah.
Started dumping on us, and then, uh, you know, defense held them, after offense went down and scored to, to tie the game up, and, uh, the guy hit a, a nice long yard, or I think he could've made it from seventy. And, uh, you know, we had one more chance at the end there, and the ball coughed out, and so, came up a little bit short, but, uh, you know...
Well, look, here's the deal. You guys went there. A lot of guys didn't. Alright, so that's the key, right? So we're, we're really proud of you, and, uh, we, uh, the, the city council, we got all those... So he basically told you the story, that's all those wherethas's that are out here. So you guys can, uh, stick this in a cabinet, or, or get, get a frame or something for it, you know? But, uh, uh, the, uh, the entire city council is so proud of you guys. How, uh, how are you doing on your, uh, fundraising thing here for your, for your rings?
Well, we had about half. Um, Deshaun shed a, a pro, professional athlete for the, uh, New Orleans Saints. Uh, put it on his social media, and one of his friends, uh, that follows him, actually raised the other half on his own, and donated.
I know a lot of people in the community were contributing on the funding. So you, you got it covered?
And, yeah, so, we had about halfway, and this other gentleman, uh, you know, believed in what shed is preaching, and, uh, donated the rest, so we're fully covered.
Well, there you go, so you guys are gonna, you wanna see those rings, huh? Yeah, so here.
Well, and I'll be quick, I'm, I'm coach leader, I'm the head football coach, this is my second year at, uh, at Highland High School, and been fortunate enough to have been coaching out here in the valley for about twenty years now, and so, uh, real happy to be at Highland, and I feel at home, I live in the community, I live right by Highland, so it's nice to, uh, not only teach at a school, but, you know, you go to the store and you see all the kids in the community as well, so it's, it's special for me, 'cause all these other years I've coached at another school, but live in a different community, I am, I am right in this community. Yeah, I'm gonna let these guys, uh, take the mic here, and this is, uh, Damian Pecoraro, quarterback.
Hello, yeah, um, I'm Damian Pecoraro, I play quarterback, uh, I'm a senior. Um, just, I'm just thankful that we got the opportunity to be dead, and, uh, you know, we brought, we brought a ring back to, back to Palmdale, so that's good.
Where, where you headed from as a senior, where you headed next year?
Uh, most likely I'm gonna be going to either locally ABC or, or C O C.
My name is, uh, Brandon Fornetti, I'm, I play, uh, middle linebacker on defense. I'm a two-year varsity starter, and, uh, I played, uh, Highland my whole four years of high school.
I'm Jacob Flutari, I play corner and slot. Uh, I played, uh, varsity for two years, and all four years I played at Highland.
Hi, I'm, uh, Isaiah Creach, I play running back, and I went to Highland for all four years, and I'm a two-year starter.
You had a great run down there.
Uh, Eric Lynn, uh, D-line coach, assistant coach leader for many years, so, yeah, thank you, guys.
Alright, so, uh, council, when they get here, we can, uh, we'll make this presentation. John, you wanna... Here, you're a quarterback, right, so that's your job.
You gotta walk, come in here, or go that way a little bit, so I can see you. Alright, ready, look at me, I'm thinking about three or four, one, two, three. I say I'm gonna take him, come on, there, one more. He has a bright, a battery. Alright, thank you.
Alright, did you, did you get what you were looking for?
Yes.
Did we get all the mom or oxy? Let's give these guys a hand, that's ready for us. So we want, we're, uh, looking forward to great things from these young men, so, thanks for the rest of... Preston, you got a bunch of other Highland, who's all the Highland guys who are here? Let's see, all the Highland family and staff, all that stuff, look at this. You do the presentations, and we empty the place out. Okay, so, uh, item number twelve. Uh, public comments on the consent calendar and non-agenda items. If you wish to comment on any item listed on the consent calendar, under items number fourteen, fourteen point one through fourteen point two-five, please come forward to the podium, state your item number in your comments. For non-agenda items, you have the opportunity to address the council on any subject regarding city business that's not on the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken on these items, not specifically referenced in the agenda. Uh, you have a total of three minutes, you don't have to take it all, but, that you can. And, um, if you decide you wanna speak, if you could fill out a speaker slip, it allows, helps the city clerk keep track, and allows us to follow back up with you. So do we have any public comments on the consent calendar or non-agenda items? Come on down. Okay, Linda Hart?
Hi, um, my name is Linda Hart, I am a resident of Palmdale. Me and my husband bought a house out here three years ago, we love living out here. Um, I'm a student at ABC, so I was assigned to come here and write a paper. I also did wanna make a comment, though, over something that I felt really strongly about, was that, um, on December twenty-seventh, when there was a snowstorm, um, me and my husband tried to take my brother to the airport, we left about four hours early, and we couldn't drive anywhere on Avenue S. We didn't see any kind of, um, salting of the roads, no kind of snowplows. And, um, after two hours of trying to get on the freeway, it was completely closed. But there was no signs up or anything, um, you know, showing us what we should do, and we saw, like, cars crashing into each other on the side of the road, and I just think...
You know, a little like in Chicago or something, hey?
I just think, um, Palmdale was completely unprepared, and that maybe we should, we should get more, um, equipment and stuff, in case there's ever a situation like that again.
Yep, so we appreciate that, and I've talked with public works about that exact item. Thing is, is that, when's the last time we had a snowstorm like that, eleven years ago, Bruce? Yeah, so, to, to have a lot of snowplows that we're paying for, sitting there, uh, is not real cost-effective, but everything we had that had a shovel on the front of it was out on the streets, might not have gotten your spot, but I was out there, I've got a Jeep, so I got around, and, uh, I know these guys were, like, up by the hospital rescuing ambulances that got stuck, but there's only so many streets they can hit, they start on the major arterials, and they kinda went from there, but that's a good thought, I know they've looked at it, they learned a lot from that. Uh, I, I know they had, uh, were sanding and, uh, salting and cindering a lot of the bridges and stuff like that. Uh, that was kind of an unusual, uh, I'm sorry you got stuck, a lot of people got stuck. But it's so, you know, it's, we have enough crazy drivers out here without snow, right? So, uh, but, it's, uh, we can talk to you more about that, if, uh, if you like, we can, uh, set up some time, and, and, uh, you can use that as part of your paper, if you like, that, that's, those are good thoughts, so...
Well, thank you very much, and like I said, I really do love living in Palmdale. The community here is just, it's so different, it's so friendly, it's so nice, and there's just so many wonderful things about the city.
Alright, if you left your information with the city clerk, we can follow up with you, and if you have some additional stuff that you need to add for a paper, I routinely meet with, uh, the students, uh, you're with Amica Don's class?
Um, Mrs. Amica Donia.
Right, so, uh, I routinely will meet with you, any of the council members can do that. And, uh, we can, uh, help you through any other additional stuff. Matter of fact, if you sent me an email, I can help prepare, and I can get some staff comments ready for you, too, as well.
Oh, wonderful. Can we ask where you came from when you moved here?
Yeah.
Where'd you move from?
Oh, we actually came from the San Fernando Valley, from Northridge, and my brother-in-law comes here, and we couldn't afford a house in Northridge. And, um, the, it was just wonderful to be able to buy our first house, and we just have the most wonderful neighbors. I mean, everywhere I go, it's so different than Northridge, like, people seem so friendly and helpful. You're not waiting an hour to get to a traffic light. It's just a whole different living experience, and there's such a charm in the desert and stuff that I didn't know I would experience till I was here.
Well, welcome to Palmdale, glad to have you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, who's our other speaker slip? Emily Lyons.
Another student, I can tell.
Hi, I'm Emily Lyons, I'm also a student from Amica Don's class, and I'm here to speak, uh, for the same paper. I didn't have really any questions prepared, but I did have a few comments, uh, about the Antelope Valley Transportation System. I'm actually very appreciative that we have a Route Eight that takes us directly from the transportation center to school. I don't know if that's something the city directly worked with in order to create that...
So you know, you know how that happened?
Uh, I don't, actually.
Okay, so I will tell you. We had kids from your class come to this, and I, I was one of the board members, I forget who the other board member was at the time. Yeah, and, um, the, the kids came in and were concerned about the time. And I said, "It cannot take two hours to get over there." So, that week, I went, I parked over at the East Valley Campus, and I, and I took the bus, and I went over, and I missed my connection. And by the time I got up there, I had to Uber back, 'cause it took me three hours, and the kids were complaining about the two-hour trip. So we brought that up at the, at the Transit Authority, we work with the college, we, we found some funding sources through a number of places, I think we got some funding through AQMD, 'cause we were able to take some other cars off the road, that's why it's down to thirty minutes now.
Yeah, it's very much appreciated, 'cause I...
Your, your guys' voice is heard, we do listen to you.
It's very much appreciated, I commute from East Palmdale to Lancaster four days a week, and definitely taking Route Eight not only makes me feel safer, because it's, uh, pretty much only students taking that route, but it also makes it so much easier to get to the school without having to worry about whether or not I can take, you know, classes at certain times.
Right.
So I, I appreciate the city for, uh, being able to do that for us.
Well, uh, Mr. Loa and I are, are the current delegates on that board, and every year we, you know, we'll shuffle it around based on people's schedules. If you have any additional concerns or questions about that, city clerk can give you my email. And again, we can, we can spend a lot, we're going through a whole regional transportation plan, looking at that, and we would really encourage you, uh, being that you're a regular user, and I, again, as I told the other lady, I grew up in Chicago, I'm used to riding it, I'm the one guy that does ride those buses. Uh, so, we get it, but we don't get it all. So that's why we need you guys to tell us what we can fix and do better, okay?
Alright.
Alright?
Alright, thank you.
Great, thank you. So, did you leave, is your numbers, contact number on there?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great, we'll get ahold of you, thanks. Who's this guy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Oh, excuse me, city council members, uh, city attorney, and, uh, city manager, and, uh, city clerk. Uh, I, I'm here to, uh, to announce that, uh, former mayor, Lancaster mayor, Henry Hearns, Bishop Henry Hearns of, uh, Livingstone Cathedral. His youngest son lost his battle with, uh, cancer recently, and, uh, I wanted people to know that there will be services this Saturday at the Livingstone Cathedral at eleven AM. Uh, Bishop Hearns and his family's been a resident in the Antelope Valley for nearly fifty years, and has served this community well, so I thought it'd be important for everyone to know that he lost his youngest son, and as any parent knows, it's difficult when your child goes before you. So, uh, once again, the, the, uh, services will be on Saturday at eleven AM at the Livingstone Cathedral, and that's at, uh, uh, Hundred Street East and Avenue R, so...
So, uh, I'd like to ask the council if we can adjourn in his memory this evening, and that the city clerk can send a, um, letter to that effect over to the Hearns family?
Uh, Sylvester, uh, Hearns, he was the youngest son, he was also a drummer, that's why a lot of people didn't get to see much of him, 'cause he traveled, uh, globally, playing drums and, and particular bands and things. So, I, I really didn't get to know him that well, I knew his other son, Henry, but Sylvester, I didn't know that well, so... This, this is something that was a bit of a surprise, uh, and, uh, again, it's a sad moment. So, Saturday, eleven AM, Livingstone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other, any other speaker slips? Okay, alright.
And the condolences card has been signed by all the members of the council. I don't know where it is at the moment.
Okay, city manager has it.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that over. So we'll adjourn, remember Sylvester.
That, and, um, Cap, uh, do you recall off the top of your head the name of the, uh, deputy that, uh, that had the, uh, was hit by the car and passed away down in...
Amber Litz.
Amber Litz, that's right. Yes, yeah, she was trained up at, uh, Lancaster, I believe, and she's a detective. So those two, we will adjourn our meeting tonight in, uh, in both their memories, so... Excellent, okay. Uh, number thirteen, waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinance? Oh, I'm sorry, that's why I shifted to any other slips, thank you, sir. Wouldn't wanna miss you.
First of all, I know... Hi, um, I know we all expressed our condolences to the sheriff department, uh, for the death of Amber, uh, a real brave heroine, and, um, she's in our, her family and her self are in our prayers. Um, you mentioned AVTA, and Mayor, you know what I'm gonna bring up, uh, bus benches. I was driving around the AVTA, and I see people sitting on the curb all over the place, and I'm just wondering if a survey can be done, this has to be addressed to AVTA, of course, uh, about getting bus benches, not necessarily shelters, but bus benches all over the community. 'Cause, you know, it's really dangerous. I go to, I take the bus, uh, up here to Palmdale from Lancaster and go to Walmart, it's my favorite Walmart. They get a lot of business. When I come out, wait for the bus, I have to stand for maybe sometime to half an hour, and across the street, it's the same story. Some people bring out shopping carts and sit there, I, I'm not that, I don't wanna get arrested for stealing a shopping cart.
I don't, don't worry, it's not on our list. Now, Michael, so, uh, I had met with Macy before the holidays. Uh, they have some of those stops, especially like the one at O eight. It's on the list, it's been sent out to an engineer, but they have to do easement issues, and there's, there's pipes and stuff. So they have to make sure that they're maintaining ADA access, uh, on those things and everything. They do have a list of, of a number of these, but we got a meeting coming up, and I will make that an issue, because I had the same problem, uh, when I'm on the, uh, um, uh, the route on Rancho Vista Boulevard, and you gotta chase the shade over there, too, and, and no bench, so, we understand it, there's a priority for it. Uh, the, um, the, the city has some, AVTA has some, and Lancaster has some. And we're trying to coordinate that effort, but we've gotta also make sure that, 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 that there's kind of a prioritized list as, just like you do with stop signs. So, where's the, where's the greatest need? Uh, and the same thing with the shelters, so, some of these shelters we put up, but they're on the wrong side, the sun's going this way, and the shelter's behind it, so, uh, we're, we're looking at all of those right now, so...
Okay, one last comment, please. Um, I've only lived up here twelve years, going on thirteen now, and, you know, when I drive down Sierra Highway, you know, it's dark as a coal mine, it, is that a state highway, or what? Why is the, why is that so dark? Why can't we get some lights on that street? You know, you don't have to have...
You know, you don't have to have the whole place lit up, but intermittently, lights, is that something I ought to bring up with Lancaster too, or?
Yeah, well, I think it's something we can talk with Public Works about, so, good thought.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Was there anybody else we missed? Okay, uh, did I need a waiver, a motion for a waiver of full reading of resolutions in order? I have a motion and a second? All in favor? Okay, nobody opposed, so motion carries. Uh, consent calendar. So item number fourteen, uh, did I have any requests for um. Uh, anything, any questions or, or a motion on uh, the consent calendar this evening? Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the uh, consent calendar? Any other comments? Okay, did uh, do we have a um, button pusher on this one? I think we might be. Okay, so I have a motion, I, by Mr. Loa, second by Mr. Corio? Ms. Ben Court? There you go, that showed up. Alright, uh, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Technology, we're trying. Okay, so I have um, we're down to item number fifteen, it's a public hearing. This is for a review of proposed resolution number CC twenty twenty dash zero six for adoption. Uh, who's my staff rep on this? Thank you, sir.
Chuck Heffron, Director of Public Works, uh, item fifteen point one is a uh, resolution. That will uh, approve the assessment of several parcels uh, for the. Iglesia de Cristo Miel, and uh, so this, I will read the uh. Uh, I'll read the resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the engineer's report ordering the annexation of the assessor's parcel numbers. Three zero one four zero ones, zero, 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 four. Three zero one four zero one zero, 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 five and three one four zero one zero, 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 six Iglesia de Cristo Miel. Located at sixteen seventy-five East Avenue Q fifteen into the City of Palmdale Streetlight Maintenance District, Maintenance Assessment District, number one. Annexation two thousand three dash zero, zero, four, the, zero, four, four, sorry. And a levy and collection of assessments within such annexation for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And confirming diagrams and assessments pursuant to the provisions of Part Two of Division Fifteen of the California Street. Streets and Highway Code as provided by Article thirteen of the California Constitution.
Okay, uh, city clerk, you have a ballot?
Yes, I do, I'll open the ballot.
And, and uh, this was the one that, that, that they had failed to adequately, they didn't mark it properly or something?
Didn't vote, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The ballot was marked as yes, the district carries.
Very good. Uh, so we'll have a um, uh, does anybody want to uh, comment on this particular item? This was for the um, streets and the.
Streetlights.
Streetlights, uh, streetlights, correct?
Yes.
Uh, for uh, for a new development over there. Uh, anybody wanting to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, move to close public hearing? Second? Any objections, so ordered? Um, so uh. Yep, so. Okay, so um, motion by Mr. Loa to adopt the resolution, seconded by Mr. Bishop. And, is it?
We have a motion, start voting.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're having, I think we're having some technology issue here this evening. But uh, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number fifteen two, public hearing and review of proposed resolution number CC twenty twenty. Dash zero one one for adoption.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
I'm Rob Bruce, the planning manager.
Thank you, sir.
I'll begin with uh, reading the res, title of the resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, California, approving density bonus agreement nineteen zero, zero, one. Pertaining to a request to construct a one hundred and one unit affordable housing development, of which thirty percent of the units will be affordable. On vacant land located at the southeast corner of Avenue R and Division Street. Meta Housing has proposed this one hundred and one unit family housing project, thirty of which will be restricted to be affordable to low-income families. On an almost five-acre site at the southwest corner of R and Division Street. The project includes forty-nine one-bedroom, twenty-seven two-bedroom, and twenty-five three-bedroom units. At the meeting of December twelfth, the planning commission approved the site plan review and the environmental document for this project. And recommended that the city council approve the density bonus agreement. State law and the Palmdale Municipal Code require that the city must grant a thirty-five percent density bonus. For projects that provide at least thirty percent of the units for low-income families. This results in a twenty-one point six dwelling unit per acre project. In addition, such projects are entitled to up to three concessions, uh, to their development standards. The request is to increase the distance between the units and the parking spaces. Reduce the common open area from thirty percent to sixteen point seven percent. And reduce the required patios and balconies from a hundred and fifty square feet to ninety square feet. The options for the city council are to approve, continue, or deny this agreement. The planning commission recommends option one, and I'm available for comments or questions.
Thank you, sir. Uh, did we have any speaker slips on this item? Uh, was there anybody that uh, wanted to speak on this but forgot to fill out a slip? Do I have a motion to close public hearing? Okay, anybody opposed? So ordered. Okay, um, council, any comments, questions?
Uh, yeah, I just want to make sure that um, this density bon, bonus will still allow ample space for a good quality of life. A good quality of living, given the, the space, and it looks like it does that, I just want to make sure.
It's less than half of what the state's gonna be requiring very soon.
It, it is, this is a good project, it's well-designed, and as you can see on the site plan, there's several amenities. In amongst, in working through these buildings, many play areas, different activity, activity areas for different segments of their population.
Okay, yeah, I think this is good, I mean, it, as the housing crisis continues, we need to. Be proactive in assisting housing developments like this as much as possible.
Right, and, and these aren't, these aren't uh, uh, these aren't like free units or something like this. They, they, they have to meet income requirements, uh, and uh, and I tell you what. Uh, being close by a school to have some family housing, where the kids have got the ability to walk to school. And probably the biggest thing that's gonna happen over there, I've gotten more comments from people that are looking to try to get the sidewalks done in that neighborhood. And this will help that and create uh, the, improve the traffic situation with the turn lanes and things. I really appreciate the staff's attention to a couple of those items and pointing them out to me in my briefing.
Yeah, and it will tie into the veterans project really nice.
Yeah.
I want to thank staff for working on this, seeing outside my district, so.
I, I, I just want to make some cautionary statements, um, because we're increasing the distance of the parking um, to the unit from a hundred and fifty to three hundred and sixty feet. You are thereby increasing your chances of having a car burglarized. The farther that vehicle is from its owner and the farther the site is, it's gonna increase crime. So I always want us to keep that in the back of our mind when we're approving these projects. I also think it's unfortunate that when we have a low-income uh, situation, that we reduce the common areas from thirty percent to sixteen. As if we're taking that away from them because they're low-income. I, I do have some, some social justice issues with that. So I wanted to, to bring those up, um, and let's keep those in the back of our mind when these, when these plans are going through. But the farther your car is away from you as the owner, the more chance you have of having a car taken or broken into, so we might want to rethink that.
Is this, is this project like gated and security?
Yes, it is. Uh, it has gate right here and a gate right here. So the parking spaces outside of these gates are intended for the use of uh, visitors mostly.
So, so there is actually visitor parking, and a lot of these places, we, they get rid of that, so.
Well, that's all about the management.
Right.
And, and we don't want to think that the people that we live with in a community, we commit crime, but um, I think we all know that some of them do, so. You, you're getting, you're getting some people out, but you've also got some people inside too, so.
Thanks for bringing that up, Laura.
Always, always be at the top of our, our.
Especially when you have more people living in a smaller area, so thanks for bringing that up, because yeah, it's part of the quality of life thing that I, I mentioned.
Is there, uh, is there a requirement in there uh, for the security plan? Uh, because we're gonna be adopting an ordinance soon to require the, the lockbox for the Sheriff's Department. For that to be added as this, as this comes up?
Yes, that's.
In addition to the fire lockbox?
Yeah, our, our crime prevention officer who has a new title now and I've forgotten, so uh, my apologies.
Yep.
Um, but she is very diligent about, of those conditionings and she has been consistently recommending that condition for probably about six months now.
Okay, I just know, and right now with the deputies, that's the biggest problem they have and.
Get in.
They get the place and then can't get in, so.
Is there also management also on this project?
Yes, there is, and the applicant is here to answer questions if you have, uh, more details.
Is there surveillance cameras in this project?
Um, the applicants are here, um, you know, we're looking at the density bonus, so I, I didn't really uh, study the plan. I don't remember security cameras, but I know that there's a security plan.
As a city, we know that we're trying to promote re, reduction in crime, that we don't make some kind of a mandate to have like motion sensor lighting and security cameras. I just think that, that, that's a, a no-brainer to just build that into a process.
Plan, don't they?
They, they, uh, they have, they've been conditioned to have a security plan and Carrie uh, is here, I think she's still here, she can specifically address that.
The reason I ask you there is on-site management, I think that's because it adds some sense of security, having someone there twenty-four hours. And I believe this is a meta-housing project?
Yes.
They are the ones that developed the one across the street, so I think that they are very capable of uh, providing a good quality of life.
Yeah, they've done a fantastic job over there.
Yeah, in that sense, I think that they're experienced and they do have one here on the seat already.
Right.
Operating that is very safe.
Well, that's, with that said, I'm gonna make a motion for this.
Well, second that.
Richard?
The um, Palmdale Learning Plaza is catty-corner from this project.
Correct.
One of the things that I've observed, and I don't think it's been corrected, is there isn't any sound wall there off of the fourteen freeway. Uh, for that school, and I think it's, it's pretty noisy. What's, what are the sound impacts on this project? Was that studied?
It, it was studied, it was part of the environmental document, um, the mitigation measures have been incorporated, so we've got things like dual-blazed windows. Um, and, and the standard mitigation, they, they are a little distance away from the freeway, so it's not too bad at this site.
Not too bad, yeah, but it's pretty bad at the school. I hope we can get Caltrans to do something about that.
I've got houses, I did that, some houses that are literally backing up to it and. I know the one that we, uh, over by Manzanita Heights Park, it took a decade or more of constantly, it's um. Um, s, the sound wall issue is uh, Caltrans has uh, got their own priorities on that and. You know, just sitting at transportation meetings, listening to that, so, that's a great point, we should add that to our list of things we need to talk to Caltrans about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one more thing, I know traffic when school pickups and drop-offs can be frantic, so I know that's gonna have to. Have extra coordination during those times, especially during construction. So I know I've heard from a handful of residents that traffic can get busy at those times, that, I know you guys are aware of that.
Right, yeah, but Public Works is diligent about traffic control during construction projects.
Yeah.
Could we at least have the, could we see who the developer is?
Yeah, who's a, who's a rep on this project?
He's been very quiet.
Well, we can call him up. Hi, could you introduce yourself, sir?
Sure, Scott Nakatari, Meta Housing.
Okay, and what's your role there, sir?
Uh, I'm a senior project manager and I also did work on the Corson Arts Colony as well.
So we have some history with you.
Yes.
Okay.
What's the timeline uh, in terms of getting this uh, for people to move into the project?
Right, so we plan on starting construction roughly about September of this year and then. The following year is about a fifteen-month build, so late in two thousand twenty-one. And people can, you know, start to call the, there'll, there'll be a number that's, that's posted. And about five, six months before, before we finish construction, we'll start to the lease-up process.
Okay, and all of the um, infrastructure around that, on the street, sidewalks and so on, that's all included in this?
Yes, all the sidewalks, and that was a major component to do those off-sites and. And some street widening and to move this, the signal light as well, so, yeah, there, definitely the sidewalks was a high priority.
It's a three-story project?
Three-story, yes.
When you guys build these projects, they usually fill up pretty fast or they're, they're full almost as they get built?
Yeah, yes, Corson was fully leased in three months, so the demand is certainly there.
It is.
Yeah, and um, yeah, no, we're excited to build something for the community that, that would be an asset long-term.
Yeah, the housing demand is definitely there, and I suspect that it will be no different on this project.
Yes, I, I agree.
Can you speak to financing, uh, just, I know it's not part of the density bonus, but we got you here. So, that's been one of the things that we keep carrying is, we've got all these tracks ready to go, we've got a lot of people who want to do some building. And there's, they've had a challenge in, in getting financing. Uh, can you tell us how you've been able to negotiate through that? That impediment there?
Uh, it certainly has been getting more and more challenging, I mean, as everyone knows, construction costs have increased, you know, over the last few years. And escalating just inflation and so forth, but, I mean, we, you know, we focus on a wide range of. Of funding sources and, you know, four percent uh, taxes and bonds is one of the sources that.
This would be a tax credit project?
Right.
Outstanding?
Yeah, so, and yeah, well, I mean, we're, we're very excited about, you know, building this and, and uh, working with. You know, the city and having another project in Palmdale.
And I'm talking to our housing department, the tax credit projects that we have out there. Uh, are historically a better project, uh, they're better managed because you have extra layers of review you go through. Uh, to maintain your tax credit status, so uh, I appreciate that uh, that you're, that you're looking at that.
Right, yeah, yearly compliance and, and audits, yes, definitely.
Well, it looks good and um, I think it probably is going to get past it, is my guess, but uh, thank you for bringing the project here.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, Mr. Bishop had a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Loa has a second.
No, Mr. Corio.
I'm sorry, Mr. Corio. Oh, I thought we, I thought we did that, and nobody. Okay.
Motion to the closest public hearing.
Okay.
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 Did you want to speak, gentleman?
Come on up here, make sure they get a card on you so that we know who you were, okay? Uh, yeah, that was a, a slip, so. Yeah, go ahead, you can do that afterwards, just, just give us your name and then I'll, we'll follow up with you later.
I'm Lawrence Lewis.
Yes, sir.
So I just kind of moved out here to California from Texas, and uh, I'm, so you guys are building a apartment complex, right?
Yes, sir.
And um, so the people who, can felons stay there? Like uh, because I know a lot of apartment places won't allow felons.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's been some changes in the state law as far as what can be considered and not considered any longer. So uh, but I think that you can uh, ask the gentleman there, is there. Uh, uh, do they have to have a background check when they go in there, or, or what's the uh, what's the flexibility to allow in that? Thank you, we'll get that answer for you right now.
So there is a, a background check for, you know, any tenant that comes in. Um, but if you have a violent felony or if you're a sex offender, you, you can't, you, you're not allowed to, to stay, but. It's on a case-by-case basis.
So there's a case-by-case review, but there's, there's more scrutiny on uh, violent felonies and sex offenders?
Correct.
And probably more current ones, if you had a felony thirty-five years ago, I don't think they're gonna hold that against you, so like you said, a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
If we, if we were to ban felons from living in, in, in Helene, did we have a huge homeless problem?
Yeah.
Because almost everything's a felony now.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Once, once the project is completed and, and you began uh, accepting uh, new tenants. Are uh, prospective tenants going to apply there on the premises, or what's the process for someone applying to? To, you know, to be accepted into the project?
So we would have flyers in places like the library that are easily accessible, and also there'll be a sign on. On the front of, um, that's easily visible, and there'll be a phone number that people could call and get on the waitlist. And as soon as they open up that waitlist, it's, it'll be a first-come, first-served. Um, and evaluated on a case-by-case basis, meeting certain uh, uh, income requirements and, and background checks.
Could you make sure those flyers are put out at the local college, so that they're aware too?
Sure, yeah, we could absolutely do that, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second?
We have, we have one more comment.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Alexis, I'm actually a college student at ABC, and I was wondering, do. Or does this project have a credit check?
I think that would be part of the backgrounds.
Background, do you have to have credit?
So this is Gianna, she's the property manager with Solari, uh, she's the property manager on the Corson project as well as this one. So she can answer a little bit more in-depth.
Great.
Good evening, I'm Gianna.
Questions, by the way.
Yes, thank you, Gianna Richard with Solari Enterprises, I'm the president of the company. And addressing both back here, so I apologize for my back to you. Um there will be a resident selection criteria that includes a um criminal background check and a uh credit background check. And there are, as we mentioned earlier, scored individually based on the stuff of uh selection criteria. And we'd be happy to share that as soon as it's ready.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Make sure you get slip over to her, so she make sure you get your name and stuff down, just for the record, okay?
I get your name in the minutes.
Yeah.
We get to see your name in there.
Yep. Okay, uh anybody else that has that opportunity? Okay, so I had a motion and a second to close public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so carries, uh then Mr. Bishop had a motion to approve the item?
Correct.
And Mr. Corio had a second? Okay, okay, all right, all in favor uh say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion so carries.
Thank you.
As there you go, thank you very much. We smoke, where item number sixteen before eight o'clock?
Praise the Lord.
Mr. Bishop, you wanna start down there? So what, you know what, let's go, um AQMD?
Um we approved budget, um. It wasn't much on the agenda, was there?
Yeah, I think there was uh.
We approved the.
Some some other charging station issues we were looking at?
Yeah, and we approved a budget.
Right, there's a budget on that?
Yeah, let me double check that, um and then do you want me to go down?
Let me go down the list of required stuff and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Uh let's see, Transit Authority.
I don't believe we met, it was canceled.
Okay, all right, uh that's easy, Contract Cities, we're up in uh, I'll take that one, we're up in Sacramento. We uh met with quite a few of the legislators, uh uh SB fifty is coming back, we got about the two and a half weeks. Uh we're pretty sure it's coming back out of the uh Senate this time, uh they made amendments, but the amendments. In my opinion, were meaningless because they're allowing us two years to make uh changes to comply. Uh but uh uh I as I explained to Senator Weiner that we can't we can't get uh a project through CEPA in that amount of time, so. Um there was a lot of good dialogue with quite a few of the legislators, but uh that that tends to be the uh the big one, so. Um Audit Committee, do you guys have another meeting?
No.
No meeting.
And Investment Authority? Nothing?
Nope.
Uh High Desert Corridor, we did not meet. Uh League of Cities, I don't think we've met since the last one. Correct, JJ, I don't think we've had a meeting since then, right? Okay, um Sanitation District.
Well, we had a meeting this month, nine in December, we had one a week or two ago.
Right.
And um we had Supervisor Barker here.
Correct.
We had to have uh approval of items, uh it was a very brief meeting, but it got taken care of.
I think there's some budget items and purchase things that were going on.
Exactly.
Okay. Uh NCTC, no meeting, but it's coming up. Recycle water, Mr. Bishop, did you meet on that?
No meeting.
No meeting on that one, so the holidays tend to lighten some of those up. Um SCAG, we had the uh Regional Transportation Plan uh Outreach Meeting was uh conducted up here. At the Community Room and AVTA uh this week, uh they received a few handful of comments, uh but uh. It's it's all online, the whole RTP is online there, so. Uh Sister Cities, I didn't, I mean, did anybody else make Sister Cities meetings?
No, there was, there was no meeting for the December meeting.
Okay.
Um C H D, I believe there was a meeting last week, but I was not able to attend that meeting.
Okay, so I think they're they're just, I think the biggest issue right now is they're just trying to move the RTP forward. And they're waiting for the balance of the comments to come back uh on the uh on arena stuff. And uh Prison Committee, was there?
There was there.
That's it, all right, you wanna start a hearing?
Sure, why not?
For anything else?
I did um a coffee with a cop. I actually attended the Nutcracker, I know it wasn't in our city, but it was a great event.
Yeah.
Um. Did the parade and that's where I got sick and have been sick ever since.
I'll teach you.
Just so you know. Um I have the wrong set of stuff here, I think. I met with Nardi, I think we were talking about that, about the census.
The census.
To go over the details of what we need to do for the census and it is extremely important that we participate in that and. I I think we're already behind on getting word out, we've gotta really push that as hard as we can. So the other things I've done, did the parade. I think that's it, cause I was sick for so long, so. Mark?
For me, it was also the Christmas Parade, I also attended an Aleo Conference in Phoenix, Arizona on December sixth and seven, I believe. There was a lot of emphasis on the census coming up, uh very um insightful uh workshop on the census and all the uh. Benefits that it brings and uh assuming that we all get counted for it, so the push is to get uh everybody to be counted. Uh and the um idea is to encourage your neighbors and whoever uh you think may have some concerns with being counted. Because of whatever reason, uh it's so it's very important that everybody's counted. There was also quite a few good workshops on city financing and bonds and beet trees and all those kind of things. Uh very insightful, again, this was through Naleo, uh the National Association of Latino Electric Officials. Uh I was awarded uh opportunity to go uh with expenses paid by Naleo, uh for which I'm a member. And uh I think that's all I did because of the holidays, that's about it. Oh, one more thing, I I have been attending a couple of meetings with the TPAA in the under school district. Uh with a new opening of their new school, the elementary school, uh there's been a couple of meetings uh where. There's been discussions on how to improve the relationships uh between the city, the school district and the TPAA. Uh they are trying to get the uh campus, the old part of the bond that they have. Um on the uh southeast corner of Ponder Valley, but in thirty fifth, I believe that they have some money still from the bond. That they uh got for building the school, so they do have some challenges in drop off. Uh like any other school, really, everybody has those challenges, but dropping off and onsite circulation and people coming out. Um after school and before school, obviously, like every other school, like I said, so there's been some meetings and conversation going. And uh JJ is looking into setting up a a meeting to discuss what we could do to improve those conditions over there. And that's my report.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um with the Palmdale um Booster Club. We had been meeting on Thursday mornings, but the meeting is gonna be. Uh turned back to Wednesday morning, so more uh directors from the Palmdale Boosters can attend the share the Coffee with a Cop. Um I uh did attend the uh Palmdale Sheriff's Station Award Ceremony. On December the fifth at Gino's, that was uh very good, Captain, that was good turnout as well. Um Lancaster Christmas Parade, I believe uh Mr. Bishop and myself attended that. Uh Sister Cities Holiday Party, we didn't go to the directors meeting for Sister Cities, but we went to the holiday party.
Sure.
Uh that was fun. Um there was a ribbon cutting at uh Fresnia's Dialysis Center.
Thank you for attending that.
On Trade Center Drive, that's very good. Um the Christmas tree lighting at Rancho Vista Golf uh Course. Uh which we attended, uh ver- very well attended and uh the community really turned out and uh.
Overwhelmed them.
Really stuffed the the uh, what what kind of vehicle is that?
Yeah, it's a Bearcat, that's the 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 rescue and swap truck.
Yeah.
So, yep.
That thing was filled to the brain with toys, the the community really came out for that and uh. Uh Rancho Vista's uh the golf course uh and the leadership there is really doing something positive for the community in a very good way. Uh let's see, the City Holiday Luncheon at the Ballroom on December eleventh, I went to that. Uh the Amargosa Creek Recharge Project, I got to see the mayor turn the. Turn the wheel on that and turn the water on.
I can turn a valve with the best of them.
That was very good and let's see, um we attended at uh Transplants the uh football game. For Highland High School, which we honored this evening, uh I also attended the um Palmdale Chamber Annual Christmas Parade. And the American Christmas Ceremony that was held here um at the um at the um.
Poncelan Square.
Poncelan Square, right across the street, that was that was good, it was freezing cold, there were icicles hanging off of a building there.
A mustache, oh no.
And yet the the community turned out for that, so that's great, um let's see. Um then um we got to play Santa at the uh Christmas Distribution at eleven o'clock at Saves. We had a uh council workshop on the general plan, that was that was well presented. Yeah.
Take credit, take credit.
There was the uh, there's an organization called Amigos de la Fedia, which is uh an adjunct, two friends of the fair, Antelope Valley Fair, and they held a. Uh Christmas uh party at the fairgrounds, uh which we attended, I believe uh Councilor Corio and the mayor were there. So it was a very, it was a fun night. But important also for what's gonna happen in the community going forward as far as developing our relationship with um. Uh with the uh with the Antelope Valley uh fairgrounds. Uh on December twenty ninth, I attended the Paul George Foundation Basketball Basketball Court Dedication, again tremendous turnout by the uh community.
You were there?
Yep, right? And uh Paul George came out and thrilled the community, uh and especially with uh what that uh foundation is doing. In terms of uh enhancing our basketball courts and just energizing the community. Previously at Rancho Vista, at uh Marie Kerr, and uh and then this time on the east side. Um at Dominic Maseri Park, tremendous, let's see. Um we attended the Lieutenant Hughes uh Retirement at the Fairgrounds and. There was quite a bit of representation there, um not only from the uh Union for the. Correctional Officers, but we had representatives from um the Assembly, the Senate. The City of Palmdale was represented by the mayor and myself and it was just a a great uh honor for this uh. Lieutenant that retired from the prison. And uh then uh just Tuesday, we had the Hispanic Luncheon, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Luncheon. With the uh city manager uh there and uh kicking off the near year with those folks. And as we indicated, uh we had a sanitation board district meeting here that was attended by the supervisor. And uh on the evening of January ninth, there was a formal retirement for our outgoing city manager. And that was that was a good evening as well, anyway. That's about it, sir.
All right, Mr. Bishop?
All right, my turn, um I went to a lot of the same events, I'll go down the list, I uh went to the Lancaster Christmas Parade with Mr. Loa. And the Palmdale Parade as well, where we were all at, that was really fun and I really enjoyed having it on the east side of town, I think that was nice. To have it have it over there, um I also attended the Amargosa Ribbon Cutting and got to see. Steve turned the big nozzle and turned the water on and his fireman experience came through there, he was telling me what kind of hardware they used and. And what was it called again?
It was a outside screw and yoke.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a gate valve.
A gate valve, yeah, so we got to learn a little bit about that.
All geek stuff, yeah.
Yeah, it was, I liked it, it's interesting. Um I double checked on uh AVA QMD, that was just receive and file, a couple of house cleaning items and and normal stuff, nothing too eventful there. Uh I attended the Palmdale Chamber and got to see JJ speak and give a very heartfelt speech about. His background, where he came from, what he plans to do with his uh time here in the city, so that was uh. It was very exciting and heartfelt and I think the chamber really enjoyed having you there. Um. Let's see. Um I went to the Saves Christmas Distribution and uh Patricia really has that thing like running like a well-oiled machine. Every year I go there, they're more efficient and people are getting out quicker and getting what they need and it's just nice to see how they. They make improvements every year to make the experience better for the people that go there, so that that was really exciting to see. Um also went to the Paul George uh event over at Dominic Maseri where the LA Clippers made all the upgrades at the park. That was huge, we had thousands of people there, I think Mayor did a great job representing.
Thank you.
On stage and uh I think the community could not be happier and I couldn't be more thankful for what they're doing for us. And the best part is they wanna do more, so um what a wonderful partnership we have with them. Uh Sanitation, I attended that in Lancaster, um same stuff, uh just some purchasing and receive and file and nothing too eventful there. I attended our uh city manager's uh retirement party as well, um. So we got to see Jim have a nice send off and and it was well attended by a lot of dignitaries and. And uh other people within the community, so it was nice to see him off, most of you guys were there. Uh this weekend, I went to the ribbon cutting at the Sizzler, they opened again or they reopened. And it's nice because I I talked to the district manager there and he was talking about how the 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 corporation or the brand fell into slump for many years. Based on bad investments and overextending themselves, apparently at one time they had over eight hundred locations, so. They're scaling back, rebranding and reinvesting into a handful of locations, us being one of them, so. If you go in there, you'll see the place is is completely redone from top to bottom and.
And they and they they had that soft opening and served over a thousand people just because people saw there were other people there.
Right.
And the line ended up out the door, so.
I think I think Palmdale's ready to have its Sizzler back.
Yep.
I think so.
Yeah, um and then I briefly attended the Fusion Dance Studio over on Sixth Street East. Um which was uh which is a nice dance studio, it's nice to see young people open their business and and take that step. Especially when it's in our city, I attended the Sheriff Boosters, uh Antelope Valley Sheriff Boosters Meeting, I'm a board member on that. Um we're working uh we're working together again with the Palmdale Boosters and Bull Stations. Captain was there, uh he made a speech, thank you for coming, Captain, um so we're working together. Um I went to the Sheriff's Christmas Dinner with Ms. Bettencourt. And JJ was there and a handful of our staff was there and officers had a good time and. Uh that was well attended and that was, I think that was the first Sheriff's Christmas Dinner I went to, it was nice to see our deputies uh. Out there and having a good time and and getting together and celebrating, that was a nice dinner. Yeah, um they work hard and they do a good job protecting us and I I appreciate them. Um American Classic Christmas and I think that's it. And I'm sure Mayor will fill in the rest, that's my report.
I think uh I don't remember if the Skunk Works groundbreaking was before or after the last council meeting. But uh Lockheed's got five hundred jobs coming in, um I attended the League Leaders Workshop and the League Board Meeting. Mostly gearing up for uh League of Cities uh with a lot of legislative stuff that's coming down. Um trying to work our way through all the different bills and uh things of that nature. Uh our Public Works Department was a recipient of uh two awards um at the American Public Works Association. Uh one of them was for the Amargosa Creek Project over there and uh so it's the award winning Amargosa Creek Project, right? So.
That's right.
Um I went to the um over at the Playhouse, if you're looking for something to do, don't say there's nothing to do. But they had a great Santa's Workshops over there and the concerts that were put on by our West Coast Classical are just amazing. And you watch those uh young young, there's young folks and old folks over there. Um as Richard said, uh the Rancho Vista Holiday, they uh they had the Christmas Party back over there again for the neighborhood. And the line went out the door to see Santa over there, so they're really focused, they've got new owners over there and so uh go down over there. Uh number of meetings with the uh Contract Cities, SCAG and um the League Legislative. Um issues, we uh do a number of those by video conference and by uh teleconference to save travel on that thing. Uh the Amargosa Creek on a righty tighty, lefty loosey on that on that wheel, so, all right? Um the uh uh as the ground starts to um uh. As the as the planting and stuff that was go- gone over there starts to mature, um it'll uh it'll get a lot more attractive. But there's a couple of benches and things over there, a lot of people are doing their walking over there and I'm thinking my wife's gonna drag me over there to walk around it, so. They see me over there in the morning, so.
I was telling people it's not done yet, cause some people are saying it doesn't look like anything yet.
Well, something's gotta grow there, parks don't look like anything until the trees grow up.
It's coming, that's what I told him, it's coming.
Yeah, uh Highland High School Football Sendoff and then the uh the the big watch party over at the Transplants. Um also, can we extend a, make sure we have uh staff put a letter together and I'll sign it thanking Transplants for hosting that for us? Uh I neglected to do that and I appreciate the fact that uh the council reminded us that we had participated participated over there. With them hosting it, so, uh Christmas Parade was very good, uh I was invited out to uh. The uh the General's Open House out at the base, um and uh that was nice to be able to uh. Have that dialogue with uh some of the um uh these young commanders. these young commanders and to be able to meet their families and, uh, uh, it's, it's, uh, we have some brilliant young people over there working at our base. We've got these, these, these young guys that are coming out of Stanford and MIT that are wing commanders and stuff over there. And, uh, like, okay, what you, well, I've got my PhD in Astrophysics. Okay, so, there you go, I mean, this, the, it's amazing the stuff that they're doing over there. Uh, Charlie Hughes Lieutenant over there, the Retirement, um, so, uh, had a couple of meetings with the Boys and Girls Club and with the Children's Center, I think there's some opportunities there. Also considering some of the other agencies that are looking to try to do something, I think we have some, some things are gonna break here very soon. We've been meeting with the, uh, Airshow folks, uh, and, uh, JJ, you gonna announce what, what we're gonna be doing? Uh, no, leave it up to you, so, um, let me finish my thing, make sure that's on your list for that. I'll let you look the data up, cause I don't have it, so. Uh, Northrup Grumman, we've had a couple of meetings with Northrup Grumman, ladies and gentlemen, they have seventeen hundred jobs. If you've got something screwed up in your credit or it's gonna give you a little bit of bump trying to get your clearance, don't worry about it because nine hundred of those jobs are unclassified and you can continue to work on whatever that bump in the road was for you. Uh, seventeen hundred jobs this year, I've been to two hiring, um.
But it's still a weed-free company, just so people will know.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Let's be real clear that just cause California made it legal, doesn't mean these companies are willing to accept it, so.
Yeah, so they're, they're pretty strict on that deal.
You said credit report though.
Yep, yeah, well, you know what, a lot of people, a lot of people, that's a thing that the, uh, when the FBI does your clearances, that's something that, that messes you up, not only for that, but if you're trying to get on the Sheriff's Department or Fire Department or some, uh, surprisingly, your credit report, it shows a level of maturity and vulnerability.
Yep.
And you need to get that tightened up, so, uh, if you, if you run into a background problem with that, there's folks out there that can help you, the Job Center over here on Sierra Highway can help you with that, uh, and, and even within the unclassified jobs, there's still, uh, a, uh, promotional ladder within that.
Yeah, most companies have those requirements, especially when you're larger than the company that.
And as far as North goes, I used to work there and I loved working there, it was a great company to work for and I highly recommend it, it's, it's a great place to be.
If you're, if you're a veteran, they're focusing like a laser beam on veterans.
Yeah.
And they have hired a, um, First Sergeant retired with his, his job, and this is why we met with, uh, Valley Oasis, uh, to help us, uh, quarterback this thing and have a navigation person to help us on this. Um, because, uh, he's literally going out and finding these guys that are sleeping in their cars, asking if they're a veteran and they're offering them jobs and training on that with accelerated training. So, uh, there's work out there, folks. Went to that same Saves deal with you guys, it's amazing what, uh, our Saves people do, uh, with, uh, with what they've got. Uh, and, uh, as Mr. Bishop said, they've got a system over there, we show up, we're gonna screw it up. So, I just, I helped carry groceries out and retrieve baskets and didn't tell people who I was. And that's the amazing part, is to go out there and just talk it up with people, they just think you're the bag boy or the cart guy and then, uh, before I left, I would give them my cart and it was, it was just, it was, I tell you what, if you're looking for something to do anytime, go on over there and volunteer.
I didn't go to the distribution, I went to the part where we took the stuff off the bus.
Yep.
And brought it in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there were a number of those types of things that all kinda went together on that. Uh, Paul George, thank that man for what he's doing out there and their fa- that foundation and their people. Uh, it's, uh, it's amazing what's going on and it's amazing what's coming. Uh, went over, uh, I've, uh, uh, sat in on some of the, uh, AV Hospital, uh, Meetings. Um, we gotta seriously look at that, folks, because, uh, whether you agree with the, with what they're doing and how they're doing, we need both hospitals out here, so take a good look at that material, I'm not telling you how to vote, I'm not advocating from the dais, but I am advocating for you to get educated and figure it out, cause if we don't have two hospitals, it's gonna be a problem. Uh, went to the Amigos, uh, Christmas Event, I also attended the, um, the event with, uh, uh, the Sister Cities, a Christmas Event. Uh, I met last Saturday with Mental Health America and a rep left, unfortunately. But, uh, Mental Health America hosted, uh, a program with, um, the, uh, the interaction with the faith, faith-based communities because quite often someone that's having a problem, that's where they'll end up is over at the local church, because it's a safe place to go into. So, it was, uh, it was very good and wanted to continue that dialogue. Uh, also attended the Fusion, uh, Ribbon Cutting and the Sizzler and several of the other community events you guys spoke about, sir.
Alright, good evening, uh, I've attended most of the same events that all of you, uh, have announced, but, uh, I will talk about on March twentieth at Joe Davies, uh, Air Park, we are gonna host an event leading up to, we're gonna be a sponsor, uh, with the Airshow and we're gonna host the Blue Angels and they're trying to lock down the, the Army Golden Knights to do a nighttime uh, parachute jump, so, six to nine PM, look for details, we'll have it on our website, um.
How many of y'all saw the jet come in today while he's doing a little bit of recon and meeting, they came in today about two o'clock, so.
Right, uh, I wanna thank Ca- Council for the opportunity, I'm very excited, uh, to be your City Manager. Uh, I appreciate your trust and support on the staffing and leadership changes we've had, we wanna be responsive, communicate, innovative, business-friendly, collaborative. Uh, I have, uh, written efficient, so I guess we're gonna set, uh, a time, a new time, you know, as a new City Manager, I'm thinking eight thirty is a good time to end these meetings, so, uh, you know, we'll leave that up to you.
Depends on your agenda, sir.
Alright, well, we, we got through it, I'm, I'm good so far. Uh, wanna partner with you and we certainly wanna partner with the community, uh. With some of the organizational changes, uh, I'm here to, uh, let you know that uh, the staff is very efficient, I had a conversation this morning and our website, uh, now reflects, uh, Parks and Recreation and I'm asking, we are gonna have a, a soft changeover. Uh, I'd ask for your patience, uh, why it's on the website. We've had long discussions that we're not gonna go out and s- and waste money and buy new shirts and things like that. As we're due to order things, we'll update the name, but, so I'd ask for your patience, if you see something, don't, you know, work, and, and we're all probably, and I'll probably be the leader, uh, make some mistakes in public speaking about it, but at the end of the day, we're still gonna bring culture, innovation and great library service, we're gonna bring the best of the West, Dry Town, Amphitheater, Aquatics and Playhouse. And we're gonna deliver great service and I thank Carrie and her team for already making the change and, and carrying that attitude forward, that we're gonna be responsive.
Outstanding, well, uh, so, everybody knows, there's, there's a few changes. If you're not, if the guy you thought isn't answering the phone, yeah, call Claudia or somebody and they will get you to the right person. Uh, we're working really hard at, um, making, making a handful of adjustments here. Uh, the idea is, is that we need people where we need people, okay? And, uh, if you, uh, if you wanna be involved in, uh, different projects and stuff, just let us know. We've got a lot of things coming down the pipe here, um, and, uh, just for everyone's benefit, I appreciate the meeting, every reasonable hour, because, uh, in just a few hours, I'll be getting back up to get on a plane as we're going up to, uh, going up to Sanford, uh, Sa- Sacramento, uh, to testify for the bonds for the other, uh, that'll facilitate another three point three billion in bonds for the train to Vegas. So, that thing's gonna become reality long before anything else happens, folks, so, alright.
I think we, we, the, um, Corson Park Swimming Pool is just about completed. Is that, is that correct and, uh, so there's gonna be an opportunity for the community to participate in, in opening that, that's why I go for the community.
Do we have a, we have a timeline on that, Carrie?
I don't, I don't have the, um, Chuck.
Chuck?
We'll get that date.
First of all, I mean, it's gonna be within a month or, or six weeks.
Very important for the community.
Okay, and I'm here in maybe March?
We're trying to coordinate a date with them and Council, make sure everybody's here.
Okay, so that's coming.
So, Mr. Miller, you know, the, uh, the children around that part of the city, the central part of the city have been out of a swimming pool now for over a decade. And this is, this is a big item, so I understand you're combining it with the Arts Colony, but I don't want us to forget the kids that are gonna really enjoy that pool once it's, uh, once it's here. Okay, thank you.
Alright, anything else? Okay, so we're gonna adjourn the meeting, uh, we have the, uh, the members, uh, that we have.
Um, there was one item for a request for new agenda items.
Oh, was there anything else we needed to get on the agenda coming up here? Okay, in the meantime.
Wait.
Okay, we know his number, talk it up with him, get it on his agenda and let's see where we can go to from there.
We're closing the meeting.
And we'll close him, sir?
Sylvester Hearns.
Sylvester Hearns and Detective.
Detective.
Yeah, Amber.
Amber List.
Yeah, please, I think there was somebody else in the community that we just lost and I'm, I'm drawing a blank on it, did anybody? Did we have somebody else that we lost that I'm not?
We have that.
Okay, alright, so, meeting will be adjourned, thank you all for being here tonight.